Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. We'll start our meeting for June the 14th at 1:00. Do we have any emissions, corrections, additions? Oh, Sue?
Could we add in wastewater treatment plant update in camera?
Okay, we'll call that six C. Wayne?
Could I get an update on the Highway 13 paving project? I know we got a communication saying they're looking into that. I follow that up a little bit.
Okay, that'll be six D. Al?
Clarification for tenders requiring Core and C Core and liabilities.
Okay, that'll be six E. Thank you. We'll go on to two A, committee and board report appointments. Come on. Just have to go in order.
Okay, as for committee reports, May 12th, we had a walla meeting going over budget and house cleaning, basically. 27th, I had a meeting with two businesses regarding tender procedures and Core and C Core. And June 11th, the meeting with concerned business finishing touches regarding vagrant walk-ins. That was about it.
Any discussion or? Okay. We'll move on to.
You gotta get all of us.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Dean?
Let me go next, sure. I really don't have anything to report. The library nor. Sorry. I don't have anything to report. We have not met over the last two weeks.
Wayne?
Alan's already spoken to our meeting with Walla and there's another one coming up shortly. And so I'll have more to report when that one transpires.
Yeah, so we had a team up to clean up for the community engagement committee. It was really, really good turnout and we got a lot done. And we got a lot of really good feedback from it. So it was a really, really good time. And we had the diversity and inclusion task force meeting as well. And we're looking at doing something combined for Pride and Indigenous Month. And we're going to look at doing an art walk for that. And I've also been attending all of the downtown business meetings that the chamber has been putting on and those have been really productive and really cool to see, really well attended as well. So, yeah.
Or Kevin? Thanks, Jeff. I was gonna take part in the joint city county school board, but apparently I'm not smart enough to download Google Chrome. So I'm working on that for the next one. Diversity and inclusiveness, we've been working on some good things as Gabrielle said. I'm working on a thing with some friends of mine out of Masca Chees to bring a convoy from Enoch heading to Bear Park to come through with Tasman. And I'm just waiting to hear more on that. And we'll keep everybody involved in that one. And team to clean up was a lot of fun. I'm glad I had a reacher because I can't bend down that far, so.
No, it's good. I have one of those at home.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. And I guess mine with me and Tyler on the cameras. Word, nothing yet. But I did have, I find kind of enthusiastic what's happening around with Tasman there. Is everybody seeing that little picture of that strip mall going in over beside McDonald's? So the tender for that closes here on the 25th this month. So don't know what's going in there, but they, they want to put a building there. So that's kind of nice to see that going on. Wayne?
Can I get some clarification here? We seem to have two reports, one being the committee reports and the other being event attendance. So are we merging those two reports now or are we keeping them separate? So when we have committee reports, it's really committee reports and event attendance. It's all rolled into one. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other? Thank you. We'll move on to division reports. Fire department biannual report.
Good afternoon, council. Well, you missed the screen up top. We're gonna razzle and dazzle you with my handiwork here. Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to present to council our biannual report for the fire services. In this, I included a chief's message. I thought it was very important to include this as well to, you know, give direction to where we are at as the fire department. And I wanted to take this opportunity to reflect on the accomplishments of the fire department and its membership in 2021. Through our biannual report, the landscape of the fire service is constantly changing. And we're proud to say that the Watasman Fire Service has been the forefront of a lot of these changes. So 2020 was absolutely a challenging year. So a lot of changes had to be made, a lot of protocol on the fly. And I really am proud of the membership for being able to adapt to that as well as they have. Through all that, we are still committed to provide a high standard of service to our community through our prevention, education, and emergency response. And our goal as the fire service is to become a leader in fire services throughout the problems. Our department, I am extremely happy to say, is fully engaged. We are engaged in providing the highest level of service to not only our residents, our business community, and our visitors. And we are working on and developing stronger relationships with external agencies and government organizations. So just a little highlight, the Watasman Fire Department has been in service since 1903 and we are looking forward to serving for years to come. So overview of our department. So currently, our fire department is staffed with two full-time members, that being the fire chief and the deputy fire chief, and 35 paid-on called members. Through the membership, we foster a culture that promotes diversity and inclusivity throughout the ranks. So we have a very good range of, of members. We welcome our indigenous group, our Filipino population. We have five female firefighters on staff to date. At the time of the report, we had six, but unfortunately, one had to step away for education commitments. So once we get through our next recruitment, we are going to be really targeting, you know, more of our indigenous Filipino population and really boost the ranks. So service. Annually, the fire department responds to 500 emergency calls. And that could be high-low. So in 2019, we responded to 562 emergency calls. And in 2020, it was down to 512. And currently, we're back on track for that 550 mark. So it is bouncing in and out of there a little bit. So through our service, we provide safety codes officers. So we do have two safety codes officers to the Level Two standard. And that is part of our quality management plan that has been adopted by council for inspections, investigations, public education, and what we need to function for accreditation. Services provided. So we have our fire suppression, medical first response, motor vehicle collision rescue, wildland and grassland fire suppression, citizen and agency assists, alarm activation responses. And then we have training, not only to our internal membership, but also to external clients, other outdoor government agencies. One of our main clients, of course, being the Technical Services Advisory Group. We also provide fire investigations for the community, pre-fire inspections, and very importantly, public education. Okay, public education, even though through our COVID year last year, has been extremely successful. Unfortunately, the fire department was not able to get into the schools to, you know, go see the kids face-to-face. But rather, we did get the education material to the teachers and it has been delivered. And all the, all the materials that we have delivered had been given to a child from grades K to 12. And of course, the older, older children received what I put on your desk, these books here. And this is a initiative we started up with organization called Community Safety Net. So they used to give an interactive DVD with this, but now it's a little download scan you put on your smartphone so the kids can take this wherever they go. So please pass these books along if you have youngsters in the household or little ones that need a nighttime story. Marigandum? New lullabies? It is absolutely, it talks about everything that we do with the schools through calling from a safe distance, planning an escape route from the home, knowing two ways out of every room in your house, to even fire prevention in grassland or wildland settings, safe campfires, things that kids should know is all in this book. And this is our third year doing this since I've been here with this initiative with absolute amazing success. So we do want to thank all of our local groups and businesses that have sponsored children for this. All right, then we get into public education. So from 2018 to 2020, we've gone up from 630 students. Then, of course, we've had students outgrow the age group we were in and then spike back up. So it's been really good. So 2020 with a very successful year between the school materials and these interactive books from Community Safety Net, we were able to reach out to about 640 kids in the community, which is very, very incredible. So it's, that does mean we are getting our information out. Okay, then we have some combined response graphs here. We went back nine years on this from 2012 and brought it up to 2021. And at the time of this report, we were sitting at 216 calls at the midpoint of May. But since that point to now, we're, we're north of 250. We're just about hitting 300 here for emergency calls. So as we look through this, we go through our combined years, the green being the county stays pretty, pretty static. They don't have a whole lot of moving up and down. They have their MVC calls we'll go to or the outdoor fires that we respond to. But our city response really seems to fluctuate. And it's been fluctuating a lot more since 2016 and onwards up to current 2021. So population, our transient groups that we do have coming in and out of the city do play a large part into the response. And then, of course, our combined response, how it shows it actually increasing every year. Okay, and our next one is a month-to-month for 2021. So 2019 to 2021, we broke out just to give a quick comparison of month-to-month where we sit. So January of 2019, we were 36 calls just for the month. And then we're up to 42 to 47 calls from 2020 to 2021. With February and March being very high months, between 55 to 57 calls per month. So it is pretty tasking and we are quite active when it comes to the month-to-month stuff. And then currently on, I did not finish, like I say, this was up till about mid-part of May. So when we do our second report in December, we'll have more of these numbers reflected on a more accurate base. Okay, fire suppression. 2018, so for fire suppression, this includes structural fires, vehicle fires. We've seen about 50 calls between the city and the county. So that could be vehicles that were stolen, lit on fire, or to structural fires. It declined slightly in 2019 to go down to about 38 and then spiked back up pretty hard in 2020. And 2020, we did see a large rash of arson fires that took place from late spring into early fall. 2021, we're currently sitting at about eight fires, which more or less include structural. Then we move into our motor vehicle collisions. So combined through city and county, the fire department responds to 85 to 90 motor vehicle collisions annually. So this here, looking at our chart, 2021 is gonna climb back up, but I think we're gonna be pretty static with that one as well. Alarm activations. So our alarm activations were about 140 in 2018 and just about hit 200 in 2019, started to decline in 2020. And hopefully, there is a little more on the decline now, but we still have quite a few false alarms happening within the city. More alarm companies coming in, setting up the systems and residential structures. To alleviate some of the stresses due to alarms, we have changed a few protocols within the department. So instead of running a whole bunch of apparatus to an alarms call, we're sending a command truck, get eyes on the incident. If it's something that is a cooking incident, we don't need to be running 10 people in a fire truck to that. Rather, get eyes on it with one person and then call as needed if there is something else in the works. So we are looking at ways to be more effective with our resources. And then our medical first response, we did have a huge increase of those in 2019. Started to scale back in 2020. And 2021, since we changed our dispatch services, there has been a different naming in them. So I did not list them on the 2021. I still have to break those out of the dispatch protocols. But through reviews with, with our EMS assists, we're now mainly going to lift assist as our number one type of response for medical first response now. And then a few cardiac arrest type incidents. So in between that has really scaled back and we haven't seen a whole lot of activity in those, those areas. All right, our capital projects. Some people wanted a different picture, but I thought I better keep this G-rated. So 2021, our capital project for the fire department was our decontamination showers for stations one and two. The purpose of these showers, of course, is to reduce the harmful exposures to our firefighters from structural firefighting, vehicle fires, medical response, things where they could have bloodborne pathogens onto their skin and have the ability to get this off of them before they take it home to their families. So we have started our, we have started our showers in station two. So those have begun already at the May 31st, they started. And they are ready right now just to install the shower and replace the bit of flooring that we had to pull up. So with that area there, oh, sorry, next slide, please, Karen. With that, we're looking at mid-July for station one to go undergo its renovation. And the only delay on that is finding the showers themselves. So there has been a bit of a, a back order on showers. So what we've, what we have done here is we broke it down to each station at 37,500. However, half of that is covered by the rural fire board. So in essence, between both stations, the city portion of this project will be the 37,500 and the rural fire board will pick up the other half. So it's a great initiative and hopefully should be done by the end of July. All right, our other capital project, a long-awaited one. So this one should be on the road coming our way within the next week. So it's been a long overdue and a long wait. So this is the new rescue one. So this is the Fort Gary Build Custom Cap Spartan chassis that will incorporate a lot more onboard than what our current or outdated rescue truck will provide. So in the back compartment of this is a command center with a command desk, internal charging for radios, the large scene lighting, and it has lighting all the way around the vehicle. We do have the, of course, the fridge for water and stuff. But through this project, you know, once we get this year and we invite council over, you get to try coffee out of the Chuck Norris coffee pot. So that's gonna be something pretty spectacular. So we're really excited for that little component too. So once we get this ready for service, we're gonna have our awards ceremony with, with council, of course, and get this truck into service. So we're, we are looking at mid-July to have this one ready for the road with all the tools and everything put in it and necessary training done. So. All right, and this capital project still came around the $704,000 that we budgeted for. And of course, the projection date was June 15th. However, there was a, a mix-up on one component that had to be switched out and that was the SCBA release for the firefighters. So just in the SCBA seats, instead of having a release that's easily accessible, you had to bend way down with your air pack and you tied into it to try and release it. So that was getting replaced. Okay, and then some items of interest. So our external training has been going absolutely amazing, building this relationship with T-SAG or the Technical Services Advisory Group. We are now on to our fifth class of teaching indigenous fire departments throughout the province. So the city of Watasman is one of two departments that have been chosen to deliver this training. And that'll go from the full 1001 firefighter program. It'll include hazardous materials and wildland firefighting. So the relationship has been absolutely amazing and very exciting to go forward with. And we are now into month three with our new dispatch, new dispatch service. So we transitioned from Yellowhead, from Red Deer Emergency Services over to Yellowhead Regional. And that gave us a cost savings of about $24,000 annually or over the next five years or the term of the contract, about $100,000. So quite a significant cost saving. And that'll lead us into our questions.
Thank you, Jamie. Anybody have questions?
Sorry, through the chair. You had said that you had switched from Red Deer to as far as the call center then?
Yellowhead Regional.
Yes. Are you satisfied with the response? Is it any time difference as far as?
No, it's, for time-wise, it's about the same. They have a mandate they have to hit to get us out the door. So it is a, a learning, I guess, a process for each of us. We're throwing ideas their way as well that they're taking on. So it's, it is working actually quite well.
Also, Jamie, I just, I said to personally that I was very impressed with your report. I just also would like to say publicly, well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, through the chair. Jamie, thank you. Great presentation. I'm so happy to see showers going in. Really not sure why they weren't there in the first place, but that's a whole different story. Great for the new truck. I guess my question is, how's the reaction been from local businesses with the paid-on call? And I know sometimes it's hard to get the guys that work full-time, especially during, you know, daytime hours.
So there has been more of a challenge to that. We have received word from another employer through the firefighter that they will not be allowed to attend any emergency calls during their shift. So that, that does pose a bit of a problem. Through this, though, we are trying to work on different ways to really utilize our platoons and see if there's a way we can adapt and make sure we can maintain a good daytime coverage. But I think once all these restrictions or whatever start to lift and people go back to work, that might pose another challenge for us. But we'll take that one head-on when it comes and move forward.
Right, and I think everybody just needs to realize the importance of, of what's, what's going on here. So, you know, at some point in time, the building they're working in may be on fire.
That's true.
And all of a sudden, there's nobody that can. I know, and I thank you and appreciate everything you do.
Thank you very much.
I think you have a couple of questions for you, Jamie. One, two, looking at this and I just wanna.
You didn't want to know how to connect the dogs?
Yeah, no. My grandson's gonna love it. So if my grandson sees that and you're displaying, you had the little dog, are we gonna get a dog or is that in the, in the process? You know, every fire department has a little cutie spotted dog.
Get a Dalmatian, hey? Well, I just have to keep it somewhere because I don't think my dog at home would like a friend in the house.
We're gonna have a rotation between the deputy mayor, so they're gonna have.
Yeah, we can look after him, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah. Well, there's three fires around my place.
I would be in for that, Tyler.
On a, on a more serious question, you had talked about the showers. How often is our fire men get checked for cancer, chemicals like that? Do they go on an annual basis, biannual?
So they should be going on an annual basis. We do leave that to the members to get checked. It is, it is something that we do have to review again as a department and see if we can bring that into our health and wellness program. It is, it is extremely, it is an extreme concern for us because now there has been more cancers, you know, listed to the presumptives that were already in existence. So we're about 14 different types of presumptive cancer that a firefighter may get through their career. And, you know, of course, having the, you know, the ladies and the males on the department now, that opened up a whole other cancer stream as well. So not just testicular cancer, but now ovarian cancers, different types of cancers that will affect our female firefighters differently. So we do have to take all that into account and, and, but yes, we do have to incorporate more of that into our annuals along with lung testing as well.
Thank you very much, Jamie, for your presentation.
You're welcome. Any further questions?
Are those three guys that are on that picture, did they work for you too?
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jamie. We'll move on to bylaws and ownership and. Of course, if we had a fire dog, we wouldn't, he wouldn't need a business license or what do you? City employee don't get a business license.
Good afternoon, council. So presenting here, there's some proposed changes to the responsible pet ownership bylaw back on September 14th, 2020. During the level of service review for enforcement services, we brought forward the cost that it was costing enforcement services in regards to dealing with animal control itself. animal control itself. Part of the changes that uh during our review was the switch from our annual licensing uh into a yearly, or sorry, from lifetime to annual licensing. So the others review that we also did was also looking at uh limiting the number of animals per resident. So part of our review, we did perform a public engagement uh through a public survey. As well as uh it came to our attention that there was a small group uh that was also had some concerns, so we did have a private virtual meeting with them. Through those, both those engagements, um obviously the concerns uh were came up regarding the animal licenses uh that we were proposing, switching to annual, as well as the limits on the animals uh was also of concern. So like I said, the main proposed changes, uh like I said, it was going from annual, so we've kind of broke it down into some master rates. So we're switching from yearly to annual. We had to come up with a cost uh for that. So through that uh review, we basically looked at sixteen communities in Alberta, ranging from the larger municipalities of Calgary and Edmonton, as well as going into Cochrane, uh the county of Taskwood and other areas. So the fees that were recommend, that that we reviewed and recommended were that if it was an unaltered animal, it would be forty dollars a year. Uh if it was neutered or spayed, it was twenty five dollars a year. Then obviously, because we had some designations for vicious animals, nuisance and prohibited animals, we gave some fees to that as well, so vicious animals would be an annual license of a hundred. Nuisance animals would be fifty dollars and prohibited would be seventy five dollars if approved. With that, we also said we came with a limit per household, so there was some concern brought forward by that. Um we did do some more research, found uh municipality of uh Stratton County did have a limit, but based on breeders and for show dogs and all that, they do have an overlap permit, so basically we did include that. It'd be like no different than a home-based business permit, it'd be a lifetime for that residence. And I sort of go out there, look at it, just make sure that there's no issues. Issue the permits with some conditions, and then obviously if we had issues, then we could look at revoking that permit uh down the road. With that, we also introduced um a puppy license, cuz obviously we found that obviously we do have puppies that get out, we found out that obviously to register them at that time is, you know, sometimes costly if they're not neutered or fixed, cuz obviously a puppy is not expect to be fixed at that time, so we did come up with a ten dollar a year license fee for that. As well as just the replacement license fee of ten dollars, and then for service dogs, as long as it was a registered service dog or one of our police service dogs, that's free. The license is given to them, we just run over the information for their address. So those are the record, recommended annual licensing fees. Then the other document there, obviously, we had to kind of incorporate what the revenue generation difference would be from going from annual licensing or yearly licensing to annual. Unfortunately, I I tried to pick a number um based to the fact that we have lifetime licensing right now, there are thousands and thousands licensed in the system, we have no idea if they're alive or dead. Cuz there is no requirement under our current lifetime licensing program to let us know. So therefore, I just picked a rough average number of using two thousand licenses a year. And then over the ten-year periods, um I give you one example showing that uh use the the least amount, so obviously a fixed animal at a hundred dollars at two thousand gives you two hundred thousand dollars over a ten-year period. Um if we switch to a yearly licensing using the same number, that roughly gives you an extra three hundred thousand, gives you five hundred thousand over a ten-year period. So it gives you an increase of three hundred thousand to your program to offset any operating costs uh in regards to animal control. Any questions?
Tyler? So the the whole basis on this is for cost recovery, not revenue, right?
That's correct, yes, so back in, I apologize, so two thousand fourteen, uh twenty twenty, uh councillor Nielsen saw that we were spending a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars at that time on animal control of our budget, so that's just based for cost recovery.
So then between the two, if we go to an annual or a lifetime licensing fee, is there a way that we can get to it or off neutral and then like to have it as a lifetime fee the way that we have it now? And we have it set up so that it's off neutral as opposed to doing an annual?
We could, like I did, I could try to crunch that number, at the end of the day, it'd be something around the two to three hundred dollars a year. Yeah, I mean, so there's, they're basically trying to, cost of ownership would almost be on a table for most people.
Not, like, does the annual one, if you had it annually, it was an additional three hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, over a ten-year period, yeah.
Yeah. So then what would it be then for a lifetime fee, what would the licensing fee have to be to be cost?
That's, it would be around three hundred dollars if you go annual, yeah, so that's. Cuz the way I did it first, just to show the example, is uh we run a deficit of like one point nine million eight hundred thou- eighty thousand there for the annual or lifetime. And we get the extra three hundred thousand dollars, we get the one point six million over ten years, but we're still running in the red.
So. Right, hundred and sixty a year or a hundred and ninety a year?
Yeah, we try our best practice to get to that, you know, neutral. And but yeah, just, it's like everything else, it's the cost to try to get better, it's maybe unattainable for some residents. Especially, like I said, the one group we did talk to was breeders, they're, they're running five to eight dogs. So trying to get that cost, then it would be extremely cost costly to them.
Hal?
Through the chair to Trent, um. Do we recoup like fines, how hard is it for us for fines, let's say for dogs off leash in the city of Taskwood, like, you know, I get a lot of complaints that, you know, people own two dogs and just letting them run or out in the park and stuff, and then somebody comes with your dog on the leash and they're right on that border of old guy. Is there a fine or?
Yeah, like, so like, obviously, for the first time, it's officer discretion, right, we don't ticket right off the hop, especially it's two hundred fifty dollar tickets, so your dog gets out or it's off the leash for a minute.
Yeah.
Obviously, if we get repeat offenders, yeah, then.
But these people are are basically taking their dogs out and taking them off leash and letting them run. So basically, other than, you know, if somebody could take a picture of it, prove it, that'd be the only thing that you'd have to go on that and make sure.
So we do have that, and I'm gonna be honest, uh so we do have people that take pictures, the only caution for that is um like unfortunately, the process is they have to go to court with us.
Okay.
Cuz we're not the witnesses to the, so they provide their statement, they provide their photo, they're willing to go to court with us, hundred percent, but if they don't, then basically we'll draw the charge.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Um, there was a portion where you said that it's seventy five dollars for a licensing fee for prohibited animals if they get approved. Why would they get approved if they're prohibited?
Well, like, so it is built in that they, anyone can make an application, have a certain, so we do have a list of prohibited animals, but so it's no different than the backyard chickens, if they wanna come and get that, present that, and it gets approved through administration or council, then yeah, we have no choice but to prove it, that's the process that we put in place.
Okay, so if it was a prohibited animal, it would probably come here first before we.
Okay, go through administration, it just doesn't get approved by an officer.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, through the chair, uh just a question, Trent, if you can just remind me again. Just above the top of your head, what is the say percentage of dealing with dogs that just get out of yards that you have to pick up and try to find a home as to dealing with vicious animals?
Oh, in regards to vicious animals, I'd say two percent. Of the dogs we pick up are actually, and we talked about deemed extremely vicious. So. So yeah, and based on that, uh with this previous bylaw, we actually did uh include what they call the Eadham Bar Scale, so it's actually an animal psychologist who's done tons of research on it, so that we actually, that's how we'll deem how vicious a dog is, it's based on that scale.
Yeah, okay, yeah, cuz the, the thing that kind of concerns me is we I do truly believe that most uh animal owners in the city of Taskwood are responsible. And now we are gonna be going after basically everybody to recoup costs for the ones that are. Yeah, and I guess that's my only concern right then. But, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Right. Through the chair, Trent. Um, when I raised the issue before, uh the issue for me was the percentage of time that bylaw was spending dealing with animal nuisance animals and so forth. That's been converted into a cost. So even addressing the cost, recouping the cost through licensing, doesn't change the percentage of time that you and your officers are spending dealing with nuisance dog. So what does the extra dollars do for us?
It basically starts to put, you can put that towards your animal shelter cost, right, cuz that's a cost that, cuz it's privately run. We have to recoup those costs as well as our animal licensing tags. Main system maintenance, our records management system is not free, so we have to maintain that every year.
Okay, and then in terms of time dealing with animals, you're now talking about time to issue licenses to approximately two thousand or two thousand animals a year indefinitely, so that, does that not just mean that we're increasing the amount of time we're spending on managing animals in our community?
So yeah, we have addressed that, so I actually have been talking with actually an online permit, so like, for instance, that'll be completely taken out of our hands and out of uh city hall finance, and that completely, completely done online at no involvement with us whatsoever. So that's something we're actually looking at, as well as we're also looking at virtual city hall, but unfortunately I haven't given, been given enough information of the municipal enforcement component, which is also dog licensing, how that can be implemented on city hall, so we can get us out of getting people to do it themselves versus us doing it.
Okay, great, thank you, and my last question is, you're talking about a year's grandfather.
Yeah.
And why are we looking, why did you settle on a year in that recommendation?
So basically, the, the discussion is a year, two years, four years to recoup their money, right, so basically, we've decided a year because that would give us enough time to educate, do enough communication to say after a year we're stopped looking in our old system for it, cuz we're gonna have to start new once we go to year licensing, right, so the same thing, it'd be more cost for our guys to go back in time to look at a system, to find their license, to see if it's valid, and then try to maintain the annual one for the ones going forward, we're now looking in two different systems, trying to find some, so we just pick a year, they all start anew, we abandon the old records, cuz they are unfortunately not accurate, and we start anew in the new record system.
Thank you. Uh, question, Trent, um, my concern is with my colleague, uh we in there. I see right now dogs are not your priority unless somebody complains. You're only gonna go if there's a complaint. So if we could pass this bylaw, you're gonna have more complaints, are you gonna go spending more time checking to see which dog that didn't get his license or this or that? And of course, with all the dogs coming up, that means more people coming to city hall, more time, administration. And if you do find it, you send it, if you do find a people or if you catch the dog, you're gonna give them a ticket. You take them over to the animal shelter, which is a totally independent, and they don't work with our computer systems. Uh, if you get a fine, they don't pick up the dog, they, you know, put the dog under, we get the bill for that. So the bill could be what, two, three hundred dollars and the fines fifty dollars? Do we need, point blank question, do we need more people in your department to handle them? Because if you're, you've been talking to us all year, you're, you know, you, you got a lot on your plate. For you now to put another item on your plate, you go check which dog had this year's license or not. I, I, unless somebody complains, but you know, right now, to be honest, you're driving down the road, you're not thinking about that dog having a tag on him like a motor vehicle, right? Now you're gonna drive down, will this be have a license for this year or not?
Yeah, so like, you're right, at this point, we do, don't do proactive, with us going on to an online permit system, that will actually do, that'll actually put us into a point where we can't actually check. So we have a complaint or even Edmonton, city of Edmonton has an online system, they can direct an officer now to check on all these addresses that haven't renewed their license. So therefore, we can go in and start charging them with unregistered animals, but at this point, no, we don't proactively look and check every single residence, cuz we don't have the means or the records properly to do that.
Trent, through the chair. Um, you're gonna kind of echo off a little bit of what councillor Nielsen had to say, a little bit of yourself, Uncle Ben. How this kind of all started was the efficiency of your department, of how many hours you were putting in doing animal control. But I don't know if this necessarily, I mean, it's more of a cost recovery, but you're still gonna be busy doing this stuff. And what I'm wondering is if we went to a um a process of uh cost recovery, would we be better off to hire a animal control officer that that's what they do? Is there enough work there that that's what they do? If, um, and that would then leave you with more important things.
So yes, you're right, so we are doing a program or service level review for our own department to look at restructuring how, for instance, we have a CPO dealing with this, we have strictly a municipal officer dealing with this, we have an animal controlled, we have a quarter rater operator. Through that process right now, that's what we're trying to figure out. With going to annual and tying it into online system, that also will spend less time dealing with stuff at the shelters or whatever. Um you guys have been great with us, we have utilized technology in our cars, and as we get closer and closer to apps on our phone and all that, that will all streamline systems that we can generate without having, like, the owner themselves will start doing stuff for us. And therefore will increase our efficiency.
Okay.
Do you have one further question, Trent? If we go to this uh annual licensing, does your officers have to be trained for controlling animals? Because, you know, we don't wanna get an irate at pet owner said you mistreated their dog or cat or bird or chicken. Do you have to have a special training for this?
Yeah, we do internal training, uh that I provided, and we also can take some external training. But yeah, we comply to the same Animal Protection Act as everybody else, we still have to humanely treat the animal. Um unfortunately, yes, doing animal capture, it has been known that we're gonna stress the animal out hundred percent, we're chasing a chasing anything, whether it's a person or an animal, we're gonna cause them stress, unfortunately, if their health is poor, yes, there's sometimes, we haven't had it happen in eleven years I've been here, but yes, there is some stress sometimes caused the animal, because we're, yeah, we're trapping it with snare poles and putting stuff around its neck and restraining it, it's, there is some stuff, but we all are trained properly how to do it, and we mitigate the risk to the animal landing officer through that.
Hi, I just through the chair, I just wanted to clarify a few things from Trent's presentation, just to highlight them before uh the committee moves on. Uh first, I think it's just the overall intent of bringing these changes to council uh for discussion, or committee of the whole for discussion today was um to see if there was uh appetite for the cost recovery uh piece of of the bylaw, so the intent, the initial intent of this was to make changes to streamline how we uh how we do or how we um enforce the animal bylaw, but at the same time to increase uh the fees coming in so that we can get a higher percentage of cost recovery for that service. And the second piece that I'd like to highlight, and just that Trent already kind of spoke to, was that we are conducting a program and service review where we are looking at all of the services delivered and examining our percentages of time spent doing that service and how we deliver that service, and so uh at the end of September or the end of Q three for sure, uh administration will be back before uh the committee to present uh that report, which will provide fin- findings of what we can improve and as well as recommendations to move forward. As part of that review, we will most likely come forward with a um, you know, a a future state uh org structure and how how the uh the group can be positioned for success uh full time, and the last piece is that through the program-based budgeting uh operating business case that council approved last budget, uh we will be examining how uh the percentage of staff time spent on specific services that bylaw uh delivers, as well as the costs related to delivering those services, so I think it was councillor Nielsen, to your point on how much this cost is, how much, what percentage of time are we spent looking at that, we will be taking a deep dive in the fall as well. Uh programming service review will get us uh at a high enough level, but the deep dive from that will come in the fall with program-based budgeting, so just wanted to highlight and can connect those pieces for the committee here before Trent concludes his presentation.
One further question, if I may. It may sound stupid. Sometimes I do ask stupid things, but let's say a pet owner gets a nice little dog or kitten today, tomorrow pays the hundred dollar license fee, it gets killed tomorrow, are you gonna get another? Is there any reimbursement or somebody moves away? So it's no refund by license, no refund, whether out the door, you got a twenty-four hour kind of you know what I'm saying, if you buy it, pay a hundred dollars, say for ten dollars to go, don't know what you're gonna do. And the pet gets killed or they move away to a different province or some other county. Is there any way they can say they'd like a reimbursement for the days they had?
No, there's no recommendation even for reimbursement, just the cost of ownership of having an animal, and if you move away, that's just the. if you move away, that's just the cost of ownership because if they move, and I'll be honest, most municipalities are going this way. If they move to another municipality, they're paying for another license and it could be lifetime, it could be annual.
Thank you. Any further questions? Not so? Thank you, Trent.
Thanks, Trent.
We'll move on to you unfinished business. Twenty-one grant update.
Uh, good afternoon, council. So in front of you is the grants update up until June twenty twenty-one. As per usual, I'll only be providing um the information and notes on grants that we have already not discussed. Um, but all of the ones for twenty twenty-one that are outstanding and or we've applied for are included in the list. So under the approved twenty twenty-one grants, the city was approved for twelve hundred dollars in Fortis Alberta funding for tree planting along Highway thirteen at the city Wataasquan entrance sign. The city was approved for seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in Canada summer jobs funding. My apologies, there's a typo there. Um, for twenty-five summer student positions. Now, originally, we had applied for a hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. However, historically, we were only ever approved for up to um eight weeks of funding. Um, up to thirty-five hours per week. So the seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars was actually exactly what I had estimated we would receive based on historical data, even though we did apply for the hundred and seventy thousand maximum amount. I'm not included in the in this list and my apologies. We were also approved for twenty thousand dollars from the Travel Alberta Cooperative Investment Program. And this was for the Discover Wataasquan Region Initiative um led by ECTV. And then for outstanding twenty twenty grants. So again, the municipal asset management program offered through the Canadian Federation of Municipalities. We submitted an application for thirty-four thousand four hundred dollars that will support data collection of city assets. Um, an application was submitted to the community airport stream of the Strategic Transportation Infrastructure Program offered through Alberta Transportation for one point six million dollars and that was for the airport runway apron one and taxiway B overlays. The project cost is about uh two point one million dollars with STIP covering seventy-five percent of that. Um, we expect to hear back from this grant any day now. Um, on approved grants, so the city was unsuccessful on the Tree Cran- Tree Canada Grant for ten thousand dollars for food fruit forest at Montgomery Park and that included sixty-two different trees and shrubs. Um, the city is still moving ahead with this initiative. The city was unsuccessful on the intermunicipal collaboration grant, which is a component of the Alberta Community Partnership Program offered through Municipal Affairs for two hundred thousand dollars. And then FCSS was unsuccessful for the Civil Society Fund Grant for sixty thousand five hundred dollars for the development of a virtual hub that centralized and hosts event programming information for community groups in the region. Under grants, under investigation, the Recreation Energy Conservation Program, um the retrofit stream, we are currently investigating and it was approved in the twenty twenty-one capital budget. The city had already participated in this program for the energy scoping study audits and that was completed on Manlock, the Curling Rink and Civic Center. Um, once a contractor is selected for the retrofits approved in the capital budget, I can move ahead with the grant application to the retrofit program. The Alberta Municipal Solar Program offered through Municipal Climate Change Action Center. The city filled out an expression of interest and was invited to apply when we are ready to do so. Uh, community buildings retrofit program offered through Federation of Canadian Municipalities focuses on um widely accessible community building for energy efficiency. Um, and then also the Canada Healthy Community Initiative. So we actually are not moving ahead with um this application as there's just limited capacity right now in parks, rec and um FCSS. And then also the green and inclusive community buildings offered through Infrastructure Canada. So this initiative supports green and accessible retrofits, repairs or upgrades of existing community buildings or construction of new publicly accessible community buildings that serve high needs and underserved communities in Canada. For reporting, um, this one I'm pretty excited about. So last June, if you remember, in the twenty twenty uh grants update, I explained that the federal gas tax fund and municipal sustainability project uh initiative project required the submission of the statement of funding expenditures that were due on May annually. So ours were outstanding for gas tax fund from twenty sixteen onward and for MSI from twenty seventeen onward. So this meant that while the city was approved for the annual funding allocation for these two programs that we had not actually received the funding from these programs due to the outstanding reporting. So in order to reconcile the SFEs for both of these pro- programs to the audited financials, um outstanding projects that were funded from the grant but had not previously been submitted or approved by the program were submitted for approval. So for MSI, um I'm happy to report that we are completely up to date on all of our reporting. So there were a few projects that I had to um submit to MSI. Um, and the twenty seventeen, eighteen and nineteen SFEs were submitted and approved by the minister. The twenty twenty operating MSI SFE was certified by the minister and the twenty twenty capital SFE was submitted May twenty twenty-one. So just past the normal deadline. Um, once the minister certifies the twenty twenty capital SFE, there'll be no outstanding reporting requirements for this program. Now for federal gas tax fund, um currently, the program utilized for the approval of projects is down in the system. Um, so I am waiting for the projects that I had to um submit for approval. I think it was from twenty sixteen and seventeen um that we funded from the grant, but were not approved from uh or by the minister. I'm waiting for that program to um get back up and running so that they can review those applications. And then once these projects are approved, the outstanding SFEs will be submitted. All of the reconciliation has been completed with uh myself and Municipal Affairs in Excel sheets. It's just a technicality at this point that we're just waiting for the program to get back up and running and then we can submit the SFEs. And that is it for the grants update. Any questions?
Yes, we do have some. Dave, Wayne and Indy.
Hey, Jody. So I am confused and concerned when you said that we weren't approved for the Tree Canada Grant, but that the Montgomery Park Food Forest is proceeding without it. Um, is that with the grant from Fortis Canada or is that, does that mean that we just took the money out of operations and paid for the trees without the grant?
So they had budgeted for the tree forest um without um considering the grant. So they had already included the amount of that program, actually both of the the um the tree planting along uh city Wataasquan entrance sign and then also the food forest. They had included the full amounts in those budget. And then if we were to receive um the grants, then we would have just uh had extra operating funding. So they weren't necessarily relying on the approval of these two grants for the programs to move forward.
I don't recall that being in our budget for the trees to come out of our budget. I don't recall that being in our budgeting process, but also I was pretty sure that my motion was dependent upon if we got a grant.
I will have to double check that. I'll I'll have to do some research and get back to you on that. Sorry.
Jody, I can answer that one. Uh, through the Chair to Counselor Blatts. The city has annually about ten thousand dollars for trees. And what we've been doing for the last several years is restocking um the nursery. And I would imagine Kathy and I were just um messaging each other back and forth. I would imagine that they had plans to bring it out of that, but we'll double check. And then that program was actually supposed to be reduced back down once they hit a certain number of trees, be reduced back down to five thousand. So we'll look into that.
Thank you, Sue.
Counselor Nielsen. Through the chair to Jody or Sue, under the reporting segment, one of the talks about the projects dating back as far as twenty seventeen um not being approved because we, whatever. Um, I just want to be clear that all these projects were put on hold and no projects were were done. Um, or we did undertake some of those projects using uh city resources. Um, so just some clarification, I guess.
So all of the projects were um approved and completed. They were funded from our grant funding, but they weren't actually approved by Municipal Affairs. So for these programs, we have to submit um each individual project that we're going to use the grant funding for. That has to be approved by Municipal Affairs and then we are allowed to use the funding, the grant funding to fund that project. Now, the city went ahead and um completed projects. They were in our capital budgets. They were approved by council. They funded it from the grant, but they never actually applied to the minister for these projects. Now, the minister, um, because they're quite a few years old, they are working with us and they expect that they would be approved. But yes, they were approved in the capital budget. It's just that they were funded by the grant, but not actually approved by the grant.
Thank you, Jody. Indy.
Thank you. I guess this will be to Sue through the chair. Um, I kind of echo with uh uh Counselor Blatts's concerns on on the community grant for the trees. Um, when we did budget, I recollect that it was wasn't going to cost us anything to do this project and it was um based upon the Tree Canada Grant. Um, and then it goes ahead anyway. And I've got some reservations of how that all went down without coming back to us. I'm I'm not very happy with that. And I guess my question then is, how was that decision made like go ahead with it anyway?
Uh, through the Chair to Counselor Billingsley, I'm not sure how that happened. So Kathy will look into it and we'll get back to council.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Julie? Thank you. Keep up getting all that good money from the government.
I'll try.
Unless you can find a printing machine back there. We'll move on to our next city-owned building lease.
Five B for most grant?
Oh, sorry. Five B.
So I'm also presenting this um update for information. So on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, the government of Alberta announced a municipal operating support transfer grant due to the financial impacts of COVID nineteen. This city's allocation was up one million two hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. So in motion number um, motion number three oh, sorry, four eighty-five dash twenty, um, council approved administration to update council on monthly expenditures of the most grant and then also on motion number four eighty-four dash twenty, um, council approved um, the city manager to maximally maximize the use of the most grant within the parameters of the grant approval. So Sue had identified the below projects um as or in priority. So the first one was the emergency nursing staff um and emergency need that arose from the hub in December. Number two was Central Square and this is an upgrade to the main financial operation system used by the city. Number three was the internet and COVID communications. And this was employee or internal employee portal for enhanced communications during COVID nineteen and COVID nineteen related communication support. Number four is IT upgrades, the purchasing of IT infrastructure, including upgrades to programming and the virtual city hall initiative. Number five was the EOC budget. Um, council approved eighty-seven thousand dollars towards the EOC budget for ongoing costs related to the operations of the EOC, including uh PPE, city hall plexiglass upgrades, signage at facility, et cetera. Number six was budget deficits for twenty twenty and then number seven was budget deficits for twenty twenty-one. So if you look at the table, um, I've broken down all of the expenses um and also listed their priority number. What you will see is that for the emergency nursing hub, we're going to be funding two thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents from the most grant. For the central square updates, priority number two will be funding twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. For priority number three, the internet COVID communications will be funding forty-five thousand ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. For number four, the IT upgrades will be funding three hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. And then for number five, because the maximum approved by council for the EOC budget was eighty-seven thousand dollars. For number six, um, there's the twenty twenty budget deficits and also number seven is the twenty twenty-one budget deficits. Um, in discussions with Sue, we had decided to completely fund the twenty twenty-one budget deficits in the amount of three hundred and two thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars. And this was at the recreation facilities as most of them were shut down for the entirety of Q one. And then that way we'd use the remainder of the grant or the most grant funding to um fund the potential twenty twenty deficits in the amount of four hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. And we structured it this way um in case there is a twenty twenty surplus.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I see none. Well, good job, Jody. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And we'll move to B C for six of five C, city-owned building lease policy.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Gandam and members of council. Um, so on May tenth, administration had brought the city own building lease policy to committee of the whole meeting for council feedback. Uh, the purpose of the policy being to provide transparency and consistency to how lease agreements are managed in city-owned buildings. Since May tenth, stakeholder feedback has been received from groups who the policy would impact. A summary of the feedback can be found in the attached document titled Stakeholder Feedback. Administration has also compiled information regarding our current leases in city-owned buildings and information on lease rates from surrounding municipalities, which can be found in the attached document titled Current Leases and Surrounding Municipal Lease Rates. So based on the research conducted by administration, um, there are several different factors that contribute to how surrounding municipalities manage their lease agreements and determine lease rates. Uh, so these factors can include historical agreements, existing partnerships and size, age, condition of facilities. And so due to the inconsistencies observed, it is difficult for administration to determine sound benchmarks by comparing to lease rates from other municipalities. Uh, so using the appraised market value, which is um what the policy states, um would provide a more consistent, transparent and efficient approach to establish lease rates uh for all current and future tenants who utilize space in city-owned buildings, uh whether it be for recreation or business purposes. Administration has provided a summary of how the appraiser determined the proposed rates for multi- for the multiplex, which can be found in the attached document titled Lease Rate Analysis Report Summary. Um, so something to note, so the original report that came to council on May tenth, um, the library and the Lions Club were included um in the scope of the policy. However, upon further review, they have been removed as the Lions Club rents not leases um space at the Memorial Art Center and the library um does not operate in a city-owned building. So those two would be outside the scope of this policy. Um, and ICF update for you, uh, May twenty-fifth, Wataasquan County Council reviewed the information that our administration provided regarding the proposed policy. Uh, the county has requested a meeting of the intermunicipal committee to better understand the policy and Wataasquan County's position. Um, so the objective of the meeting will be to discuss overall philosophy for renting facilities and provide feedback that will assist administration in finalizing the policy. Um, so that is anticipated, that meeting will happen prior to this policy coming back for final approval. Um, so a couple alternate options. So council could provide um further feedback to administration. Uh, council could direct this topic to come to a regular council meeting. Um, so with that, I would be happy to open it up for any questions that council may have.
Indy.
Thank you. Through the chair, um, the Wataasquan Kerning Club, um, do they pay any utilities or any maintenance costs on the facility, whether it's the ice plant or electricity or any of those costs?
Through the chair to Counselor Billingsley, no, the tenants at the multiplex, including curling, do not pay any of the utility or maintenance costs for that facility.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Wayne?
Through the chair, I guess to Natasha. We've obviously heard from some of the organizations that are in some of these facilities commenting on their inability to increase rates and so forth. Is there a point where having that space vacant has, has a cost benefit? I guess what I'm looking at here Natasha is if you looked at the curling club, gymnastics and arts and crafts, if all of them said, we can't afford to pay the rates you're asking and they all gave notice to leave. Is it, where is the trade-off in the cost of maintaining an empty building versus the cost of subsidizing renters?
Yeah, so through the chair to Counselor Nielsen. I'll do my best to answer, but I might have to defer to maybe Paul or Sue for some further information. I think that, you know, ultimately it's up to, to council how much we want to subsidize the users. You know, it seems to be, you know, groups that are in the multiplex and other municipalities, you know, other towns and cities do subsidize them and then that's just up to, to council about a rate that, that we're comfortable subsidizing them at. I don't know if Paul or Sue want to jump in with anything else.
Yeah, through, through the chair to Counselor Nielsen. I think really what we're looking at getting out of, out of today's discussion is, do we have the philosophy correct on the policy? So administration is, is basing this entire policy off of using a market appraisal to base the lease rates. A percentage of the market appraisal to be, to, to set the lease rates. And that, that approach is similar to other municipalities in the region. Now to note, in Natasha's report there and comparators, there on how, how lease rates are managed in the region are really all over the place. Administration does not feel comfortable at this point going into discussions with, we'll, we'll pick up the three groups that are currently in the multiplex and doing individual negotiated deals with each of them, which has happened in years past because it's not consistent, it's not transparent and really there's really no integrity kept throughout the process. And so to your point, I don't, I don't, I think if, if, if the, if council or the committee feels that there's a strong risk that this current policy would drive people out of that building, would have a vacant building. I would suggest that we perhaps have the philosophy of the policy wrong. But I would be looking to the committee to provide direction on what are you comfortable setting those, those lease rates on? If not a market assessment, what, what other, what other factors might you direct us to look at to, to set the policy?
Me?
A lot of those lease rate analysis reports reflect, I'm not sure. Are we considering both parties comfortable?
And Natasha, you correct me if I'm wrong, through the, through the chair to Counselor Nielsen. In, in the assessment, market assessment analysis that was done, there was three, three types of buildings. So arts and craft was identified as a retail space. And then the other two were identified, I believe, as industrial Natasha, I think it was industrial space with the curling and gymnastics. And that's his, that's his best case, that's as close of a comparison as the assessor can make. And so that was what they were suggesting. And just, just to point out to the committee as well, the, the final attachment there, the lease rate analysis report summary provides a really good overview of the assessor's, the assessor's logic and reasoning for why he arrived at those conclusions.
My last question would be in relation to, there is some, gotta find it here. Comments regarding non-market value lease guidelines, where different entities provide suitable recreation, sport, culture. Number three points A through F. And when, when we applied the rent increases to Natasha's report, were we, were you looking at the non-market value guidelines in arriving at the numbers you arrived at?
Yeah, so through the chair to Counselor Nielsen. So yeah, if you look at the last column of our current lease rates, total annually based on proposed policy rates, like $5 a square foot for curling club, 10 for gymnastics and 250 for allied arts and crafts. That would be based off the current rates that are proposed in the policy. That would be 50% of market value.
You retired?
Through the chair to Natasha, Sue, or Paul, I'll be most still on. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure whether the policy is right or wrong. But the comparators are, are good in terms of other retail or commercial space or whether it's industrial or whether you're looking at other municipalities and how they're basing their lease rates. But it's only worth as much as someone's willing to pay. So I think that there needs to be further discussion with the user groups. And again, I'm not saying that they should be the ones dictating what they're paying for a lease rate. But I would rather have somebody in there than it sit vacant. And I'm wondering about the agreement with the gymnastics club when we set that up and we set that lease with them for them to switch from a nonprofit to a for-profit organization. I just wonder how that plays into effect on the lease agreements. The previous lease agreement that we had, Camrose is building a new gymnastics facility now. And I reached out to one of their members of council and currently Camrose does not, is not, doesn't have any skin in the game. They're not helping pay for the building, they're not subsidizing, they're not doing anything else like that. The gymnastics club is doing this all on their own. So in their own building, doing their own thing is one thing, but being in a city building and running a for-profit causes me a little bit of concern. If the city is going to subsidize that, then are we going to look at subsidizing other gym spaces, dance studios, whatever happens to be in a community that a community feels it needs to have, but somebody is doing it as their job or they're taking or whatever. So I'm just, I think that this should probably come back to a council meeting for discussion and to make a decision on it and not leave it just to administration to try to have to figure out and then have council take the public backlash on whether we're subsidizing too much or not enough or whether we have an empty building or not, depending on how we set those lease rates. Oh, and that I, if we're having, sorry, if we're having a, a meeting with the county on the ICF discussions, figuring out what they're comfortable with subsidizing as well and it not just being a city decision.
Through the chair to Sue. Like for instance, the multiplex. Right now, it looks like we're just over 60,000, we're collecting 60,000 from them on the old term. They would be almost better off buying the building from the city for a buck and taking over the maintenance and utilities and stuff. Because it'd be probably less down the road and they'd have more control over it. So that's another option that, you know, when you get down to it, you may want to look at and propose to these groups.
Again, that's a great idea, so I maybe we should have to bring that back to the council for deliberation.
My only concern with that is if we offer that to the Curling Club, whatever it may be. I have no idea how old the ice plant is in there and do they have the wherewithal?
Well, no, it did have to be agreement to all three.
Right.
Leasers.
I mean, not just.
If they wanted to form a society or whatever for purchasing that building, it'd be better than to have it sitting empty. Or if we don't know how to figure out how much, you know, we're gonna skin, we're gonna put in game compared to the operating cost or the replacement of a building. That's just another option we can go down.
Just want to make a, through the chairs, I want to make a few comments or observations. Counselor Billingsley, to your point, the ice plants, council approved last budget cycle, some money for the replacement of those ice plants in the twin arenas, which also feeds the Wataquen Curling Club, so.
Does it run off the same ice plant as the?
They do. They, they run off the same ice plant, I believe, as arena two. I could have my arena numbers mixed up there. And I think we're going to be providing an update on that here later this evening, those ice plants. And to the point, Counselor Hillgartner, we will take a look at, looking at other things like the utilities and things like that in these agreements. Up until now, this policy has been very much focused on lease rates, but we are in open negotiate or open discussions with each of those three groups for the, in the, in the multiplex to renew their agreements. So we can open up those discussions for sure.
Question to Sue or Paul. On your idea, Al, maybe it's a go or no, but if we keep selling or give away our, our properties for a dollar, does that not change our assessment value of what we own, don't own? Is that building, like you know how you have, the cities worth so much, right? What do you call that?
Assets.
Assets. So if we keep giving them away for a dollar, our value of our assets.
Question, your comment, why do you keep giving away your dollars?
Well, no, if we, if we decide, I'm saying, because I see, I see this opening a can of worms that there's other groups who are leasing from us, let's say the airport authority decides, well, we'll take it over for a dollar or something. But you know what I'm getting at? Kind of, how many more are we gonna jump on itself?
Yeah, through the chair, we, we actually have a land transaction policy now. And so we would not, it would have to come to council to override that policy. And that policy states that it has to be at market value.
Wayne?
Through the chair, I guess to Paul, Natasha. I see here with regard to other groups, whether it's minor hockey office space, iceman office space, skating club. We're inconsistent in our application there as well in the sense of only one of those four groups are actually paying for office space. How, how are we planning on reconciling that?
Natasha, did you want to comment?
Yeah, so through the chair to Counselor Nielsen. Yeah, so there really is no consistency to how those lease agreements were set maybe in the past. So that's why we've recognized the need for this policy to make it so that, you know, we don't have one group paying and three that aren't. So that it makes it consistent and fair for everyone and equitable for everyone as well. So this policy would be the first step in making that happen.
Through the questions? Al?
Another thing that sort of puzzled, well, through the chair to Sue. There's a lot of these buildings were funded by the organizations. And I think that curling club was built by the curling club and then turned over to the city, if I was correct, going way back in my years. And you know, if they take the old swimming pool, the Kinsman Club per year funded three quarters of that. So there's no record of, like going back, like a lot of these buildings were built on funded money by the groups. And now we're charging more for their own building per year. But i- is there something in there on all these buildings that, you know, how was it paid for and, and so forth?
Through the chair to Counselor Hillgartner, our records are not consistent from the past. We could look into it and see, normally what happens though is if a building is vested to the city, then it becomes part of our policies and processes. So the current land policy states that if we are donated something, that we would offer it back to them first before we divest ourselves of it. But we would be relying on if there are any records or memory in this case. We can look into it though.
All right, thank you. Any further questions?
Through, through the chair, just want to confirm next steps then for our team. We will take your feedback and do appreciate your feedback here this afternoon. We do want to strike a meeting with the intermunicipal committee to get their feedback from Wataquen County and City of Tassquin. So at some point, I'm sure we'll reach out to a couple of you to strike that committee back. And then we will bring this back to council for final approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha.
Thank you, council.
We'll move on to six A. And we will go, no, I'm sorry, we're gonna go into five C. Nope, that's in, sorry again, that's in the closed. Update, Wayne, Highway 13, you want that in possession or here?
No, I think, I think it's over here.
Okay, we'll go to six, five D. Highway 13.
So we, there was a question, I think, for Highway 13 and.
There was some questions raised with regard to the Highway 13 repaving process. You sent out an email indicating you're doing some investigation in terms of to ensure that it wouldn't, wouldn't happen again. I guess my question is, did the company that do the work meet the specifications that were set out in the contract?
Excuse me, can I ask a question? I was a sub on that contractor, am I supposed to be here? Okay.
So, so did the, did the work being done meet the specs that were set out in the initial project? And if so, how did we arrive at those specs? The second question though is that if it didn't meet the specs, is there intent to go back to the contractor to make it right or make restitution or whatever?
Through the chair to Counselor Nielsen, Kathy's investigating this right now. And when we chatted prior to this, she was still waiting for some information from the engineering department. So once we have all the information, we will report back to council. It, it's, our specifications do not do that, but I do not allow for the asphalt to go to the top of curb. But there are a lot of decisions sometimes that are made in field based on geotechnical and things like that. And so we're just trying to figure out who made what decision when, and then we'll be able to provide a full report back to council.
Thank you. Do you have any kind of timeline that you think you might be able to get that information to us?
Well, we're hoping to get something soon because if there are some corrective actions that need to be taken, we need to do that during the summer months. So I would say by the next council meeting, we may have an update.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, my question. Okay, well done with five D, we'll go to five C, Al.
Thank you. Through the chair to Sue, going back regarding, this is a copy of the amendment that went out regarding plumbing mechanical stuff and core versus C core and applying for a year to get your C core or core. Several of the businesses did approach me and they figure this is very unfair because, you know, business to get core, basically it's costing over a hundred thousand dollars a year. you know, business to get core, basically it's costing over a hundred thousand dollars a year because they have to have a full-time employee to manage it. Well, it cost them, I think it was a hundred and twenty to get core in the first place. And then they have to manage it, you know, when they have staff over twelve. And a whole different procedure. Um, I don't know exactly the cost of the C core, so C cores basically if you have under four or six employees. Um, but for us to go out to tender and I think we've been doing it for over a couple of years now where they had to have core or C core. But to allow a company to put in a tender on the basis that they're gonna apply for C core or core is very unfair and it does put the city liable for that firm. If they're on city property doing work for us, if there is an accident, the city is totally liable for that employee. Is that correct?
Not, uh, through the chair to councillor Hillgartner, not the way that it's worded. So what it says is that the city would accept a temporary um, confirmation from their certifying partner that they have applied for, which means that they've got all their policies and processes in place and that the certifying partner is in the process of reviewing it. They need to go through audits and they need to do a whole pile of different steps to get there. So what happens is when we have a contract, we get them to sign a letter of commitment that says they're accepting prime contractor status with respect to core. And then the city's not responsible. So the reason that we have that year piece in there now is in the past, they could have applied and we wouldn't have checked for three years. So now we're going back, if you had a temporary approval, every year we're checking, because it, sometimes it takes about a year to get that approval through. And then if they, if they're not successful, they're removed from our list so that, that we're not liable if somebody gets hurt.
But, but if they have, if if the tender was given to them, then they're working for the city for a year without core. Cause we don't know whether they're, you're, you're approving a company on the basis that maybe they'll get it.
So their certifying partner gives us a letter, they're covered. We're not responsible if, if the association that gives them the letter saying yes, they have a temporary approval, they'll get their permanent approval once they go through all these steps, we're not liable.
Okay, all right. So that'll be, that's explained properly then when it goes out to tender?
Yes. If, if the contractors don't understand, they can phone in and we can talk with them about it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
If I may, to your question now, uh, C core is for under twelve, core is for over twelve. If the tender goes out today, anybody bidding without that letter cannot bid because in order for you to get the letter, workman's compensation has to state that you took a course. Once you take that first course, then you're on your process. But they won't give you a letter unless you take step eight. So if he was, if he was working step eight and the letter just says that your firm is on the process of applying for C core or core and that it's a date, a year old from the date it was issued, you have to comply with all your courses. The city can't refuse that, but they have a year to get that. But he can't just get a tender, he has to have a letter from workman's compensation.
Okay. No, just long as everybody's on the same ball field.
If that's it, I, I think we need to take a ten-minute recess and then we'll come back for cold session. That's okay with everybody? There you go. Okay, guys, I need a motion to go into camera.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Good. I need a motion to come out of camera. Al? Hold it in favor. Carrie? Thank you.